Are we, are we done with the cleanup on aisle five? Okay. Morning.
Morning.
I'd like to call the meeting to order for the Board of County Commissioners Regular Meeting and Port Authority Meeting for Tuesday, May ninth. Um, we'd like to start by asking Reverend Steve Berkowski. I hope I didn't butcher your name Reverend. Okay, and um, and following him, the invocation, we'll ask Ms. Wilkinson to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Everybody stand if you can.
Let's pray. Father in heaven, we come before you today, and Lord, even though we are here to spend some time conducting business, Lord, it's business about our community, our county. Lord, we're always looking to you for your will to be done, and in that, we're believing for favor in all things. We ask for your blessing upon this time. Let celebration be celebration and business be business, but all for your glory. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor and thank you Commissioner Wilkinson. Um, Chair will entertain a motion for approval of minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the minutes stated in our packet.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. I'm going to uh, to convene the Port Authority Meeting, recess the Board of County Commissioners Meeting and convene the Port Authority Meeting at this time, and the Chair will entertain a motion for the minutes of the Port Authority.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the Port Authority Meeting regular minutes as stated in our agenda.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further corrections or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Uh, this time, I would like to call for anyone that would like to speak on public comment on Port Authority items, Port Authority items. Seeing none, I'll close public comment, and is there any general discussion by Commissioner on Port Authority items? Pardon me? Okay, Commissioner Adams, aye?
Yeah, I was hoping we, we got a port manager now, and uh, I was hoping during these meetings that we would get some kind of update of where we are, maybe monthly, and see what's going on as far as uh, what, what the port manager's doing, what we're doing with the port, any plans, any ideas that we have, maybe some open discussion, so. If we could have that next meeting, that'd be fantastic.
That'd be great. Uh, we only meet, the Port Authority meets the first meeting of every month, I believe it is. Could we do it the first meeting of the next month, or would you like a special presentation at the next meeting?
No, just an update that we got a manager now, let's see where we're at.
Not a problem. So at the next Port Authority Meeting, could we possibly have a presentation on where we are? Thank you. Is there any other business come before the Port Authority this morning? Okay, then I'll adjourn the Port Authority Meeting and reconvene the Putnam County Board of County Commissioners Meeting, and we'll move into the public hearing. On ordinance mending Putnam County Code Solid Waste Adjustment Committee. Um, I basically requested this up change, this uh, change in the ordinance, and the reason being is it only calls for three people to be on this committee. Sometimes that makes it very difficult, as one of the three people couldn't be here this time around, and uh, it made it very cumbersome to get any business done, even though we had a quorum with two. So I've asked that we add, that we change that to a five-person committee with a quorum of three. That way, we could try to do business when you can't get those three, three individuals, two, two, uh, two, two citizens and a commissioner. Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. When will this ordinance take effect, and when's your next meeting on the solid waste?
When will this take effect, Rich? Do you know?
I'm sorry, I should have asked that question. Do you have a meeting coming up, though, that we are, no?
I don't believe it's for the upcoming meeting. I think it's for after.
July first is the effective date.
Okay, alright. I'm good, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Adams, aye?
Yeah, I think this is a great idea. I've attended a couple of those meetings as a citizen, and then one as a commissioner. Um, just a note that in the ordinance here, it says four, not five.
Well, a commissioner and four citizens.
Okay, I got you.
A commissioner has to serve on it. Right now, for the last five years, I've served on it.
Perfect.
Right now, it's commissioner and two citizens, and we want to change it to a commissioner and four citizens. Okay, so I need a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, before we, how will the other two be selected? If it's in there, I didn't pick up on that. I agree with what your, what your request is.
I think that whoever's chairman of solid waste can just try to get two more people on there and appoint them. Like, that's what happens now.
Okay.
Okay, is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak for or against this ordinance change? Seeing none, the Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of ordinance number twenty-three dash zero zero three, an ordinance of the Board of County Commissioners of Putnam County, Florida, mending chapter thirty-four of the Putnam County Code, increasing the number of citizens on the solid waste adjustment committee and providing for an effective date.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion and multiple seconds. Um, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Chair?
He did public input.
Did we ask for public hearing?
I did.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Thank you, I need supervision. Um, we're gonna move into presentations, and our first presentation is gonna be uh, read and presented by Commissioner Harvey, uh, with Tracy Massif come forward, or whoever's here on that issue.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mr. Chairman? Hello, can you hear me?
Our microphone doesn't seem to be on at the podium.
There, Mike.
I think it, yeah, I think it's there now.
Okay. Mr. Chairman and fellow commissioners, this is Putnam County Proclamation number twenty-two-three dash zero-four-nine Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month. Whereas motorcycle riding is a popular form of efficient transportation and recreation for more than one million people in Florida. Whereas it is important that drivers of all vehicles be aware of one another and learn to share the road and practice courtesy. And whereas motorcycles provide a means of transportation that uses fewer resources, cause less wear and tear on public roads, and increase, increases available parking areas. And whereas it is especially important that the citizens of Florida be aware of motorcycles on the streets and highways and rec- recognize the importance of motorcycle safety. And whereas the safety hazards created by automobile operators who have not been educated to watch for motorcycles on the streets and highways of Florida are a prime concern to motorcyclists. And whereas the American bikers aim towards education to bait of Florida, Vintage Chapter representing Putnam County, the town of Beverly Beach, the town of Hastings, St. Augustine Beach, the city of St. Augustine, the city of Putnam Beach, the city of Benel, the city of Palm Coast, and St. Johns County is organized, is an organization that's actively promoting the safe operation, increased rider training, and increased motor awareness of motors, motorist awareness of motorcycles. And whereas it is important to recognize the need for awareness on the part of all drivers, especially with regard to sharing the road with motorcycles, and to honor motorcyclists' many contributions to the communities in which they live and ride. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Putnam County Board of County Commissioners, that hereby declare the month of May twenty-twenty-three as Motorcycle Awareness Month, and encourage all residents of Putnam County to be aware of motorcycles on our street. Done, ordered, adopted this ninth day of May twenty-twenty-three. Mr. Chairman, I move this proclamation forward.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, motion carries. Would y'all like to come up and have a picture made? Thank you, Commissioner Harvey.
Sure.
Um, next, we're gonna move on to Gerald Donnelly of the VFW Post thirty-three forty-nine. Please come forward. They're going to make some presentation for us this morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Uh, we're here today to uh, for our Fireman and our Sheriff of the Year Award that we do every year. I'd like to thank all the volunteers and all the policemen and for that help our community to keep it safe. Uh, to do the presentation, my quartermaster and adjutant Gerald, Gerald Scholler will do the presentation to our uh, Fireman of the Year and the Sheriff of the Year. Again, I want to thank the commissioners for letting us do this, and uh, we hope to continue this every year as we go forward. Jerry?
Thank you, Commander Commissioners. It's a pleasure to be here again today to present these awards. It's, every year, it's just something, uh, it's just enjoyable to each and every one of us at the VFW. Now first, uh, we want to do the Fireman of the Year Award, and that would be Bradley Jones. So if you would come on up, sir? I'm going to read the uh, uh, I'm gonna read the application here. When you think fire service, you think brotherhood. One name that comes to mind is Bradley Jones. Bradley's been with Putnam County for a little over five years. It's a firefighter, paramedic. In those five years, Bradley's taken several classes to achieve the skill set in the field. Bradley's a hard worker and always offers his brothers in need. When there are vacations being denied, Bradley is the first one to sign up for overtime. If there are people that are in need of a break from a busy rescue, Bradley willingly trades them so they can have a break. Bradley's trained on many paramedic firefighters, has trained many paramedic firefighters and EMTs in our service. We as a service are in dire need of firefighter paramedics on a daily basis. Bradley always steps up to give his best and his time as he actively tries to recruit and recognize our outstanding employees. Thank you, Bradley Jones, Firefireman of the Year.
Talk about being put on the spot. Um, first off, thank you so much. Um, it's an honor to receive such a prestigious award. Um, it's very humbling to receive it. Um, from people I view, you know, sacrifice more than anyone in the world, from, you know, veterans, and it, it means a lot, you know, those words, you know. Sometimes it's hard to recognize, you know, what people go through in their lives and, you know, what sacrifices they make, and while it seems great and good and wonderful what they say on paper, it's nothing compared to what these gentlemen behind me have done, you know, for our nation and for our service. Thank you so much for everything y'all have done for us, and by all means, thank you for the award.
My pleasure.
That's, I think that's all I can think of.
Bradley, would you like, Bradley, would you like to bring your guest and your family or anybody up with you, and we'll get a picture?
You can tell there's a lot of smiley faces there. You line them all up, boy. You're fine. There ain't a whole lot of room, sir, to get back in. Bradley, congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Bradley. Bradley.
Thank you so much.
Putnam County Pen, yes, sir.
Oh, I love it.
Our second award from the sheriff's office. So Deputy Stanton Brown, come up, please. Now this is our certificate of appreciation for Deputy Stanton Brown. Deputy Brown's made an impact with the agency very quickly in his tenure with the department. Deputy Stanton Brown was hired in May of twenty-twenty-one. This fall, while working security at one of our local high school football games, Deputy Brown observed a man he believed to be a sex offender taking photos of children. Thanks to Deputy Brown's knowledge of the county's sex offenders, he stopped the man, positively identified him as a sex offender, and removed him from the school property without further incident. Deputy Brown has completed the agency's field training program and is currently assigned to Putnam County's East District, reporting to Sergeant Jesse Thussell. Deputy Brown is very self-motivated. He continually conducts proactive traffic stops, attempts to locate subjects within his district with warrants for their arrest, and completes thorough investigations for the citizens of Putnam County. Deputy Brown is also a team player who assists his zone partners with their cases and areas of responsibilities. Deputy Brown volunteers to assist other agency members when they need assistance with district coverage. Recently, Deputy Brown has located several high-profile subjects with outstanding warrants for their arrest. These warrants included charges of burglary, grand theft, violations of probation, possession of firearms and ammunition by convicted felon, possession of narcotics, and the list goes on. I believe for the above-listed details and many other duties this remarkable deputy does daily, he should be awarded the VFW Deputy of the Year Award for Putnam County Sheriff's Office. Signed Lieutenant David Blunt. And our award reads, "In grateful recognition of unyielding adherence to the highest ideals of law enforcement in maintaining, preserving, and protecting the lawful rights of citizens, we here to sign this certificate of appreciation, Commander Gerald Donnelly, VFW Palacopole three-three-four-nine, and myself, the adjutant of Palacopole three-three-four-nine." Thank you so much, Deputy Stanton Brown.
Well, um, I appreciate y'all. I wasn't, wasn't really prepared to give a speech or anything like that, so um, I think the only thing I can really say is that, thank y'all for the opportunity, Sheriff, to actually work for this agency and uh, do what I like doing. Um, I appreciate y'all for the award, and um, I, I take this dollar, being a veteran myself. Um, other than that, thank y'all for having me.
Stanton, would you like to bring up your friends and family?
If you have any with you tonight. He is ready. Aw.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
Come on, sit, sit right here. You're fine.
That's even better.
Alright, here, look at me first. One, two, three.
Peter, before y'all leave, would you, be alright with you if I asked all the deputies to come forward and get a picture with him along with all of us? Would all sheriff's office members please come forward, please? I'd like a picture with all of y'all as well.
Don't go, don't go, don't go.
Standing, standing.
Stay right here.
Y'all need to get a little closer.
Act like y'all like each other, come on. Allison will get y'all. Allison will get you straight.
Yeah, we got room, come get in. Uh, would uh, before we stop the picture session, would all the firefighters please come forward? I'd like to uh, also get a picture. But Bradley's already, Bradley left? Has he already left, or is he still out in the lobby? Okay. Would you ask him to come back in?
Would you ask him to come back in to ask him, Paul? This idea didn't come to me till after we were done, so.
We'll raise money for something. Yeah. Ma'am?
Thank you, gentlemen and ladies. That is definitely the best part of our job, no doubt about it. Thank you, Mr. Donnelly, for doing that this morning. And we'd like to move on to items, see on presentations, and ask Mr. Hartsfield with the Patriot Guard to come forward.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Good morning. First of all, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to stand in front of this body and let you know about what the Patriot Guard is, why we do what we do, and who we are. It's kind of, uh, well advantageous that this month was, uh, Motorcycle Safety Month, uh, because that's what we do. The Patriot Guard, uh, in 2004, a soldier was deployed to the Middle East to fight on the, uh, global terrorism. During his deployment, he sent a letter back to his family and told his wife that if he didn't get back home, home, take his son to Disneyland. Well, he made it back home under a flag. Wanting to honor her husband's last wishes, she scraped and got everything together and took her son to Disney World. And as things transpired, this snowballed into, uh, it snowballed into a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. And this entire organization was founded to serve the Gold Star families and Gold Star children all over the world. Snowball Express was based in California for 11 years, and then moved to Dallas, Texas area where they remained for another 11 years. While in Texas, the Texas Patriot, uh, Guard riders were directly involved in providing escorts, leather vests, and building commemorative shadow boxes for graduates, Gold Star children that participated in the program and reached the age of 18. In 2018, the Gary Sneeze Foundation incorporated Snowball Express into many programs serving veterans, first responders, our fallen heroes, and their families. Snowball Express was relocated to Disney World in Orlando, Florida. The Patriot Guard riders in Florida have been asked to take the torch from our comrades in Texas, which we did eagerly. The Florida Patriot Guard riders have become proud partners with the Gary Sneeze Foundation and have worked tirelessly to build a con, a foundation to improve service to Gold Star children and to families attending Snowball Express. That's just one facet of what we do. In 2008, there was a church, uh, in the Midwest. A veteran that had, uh, returned was being interned. And those, uh, there were some protesters at that church that decided they wanted to, uh, dead soldiers, good soldiers. We need more dead soldiers. We don't need light soldiers, we need dead soldiers. Well, there was a group of motorcycle riders that, uh, encountered that. And they backed the, backed the, backed their Harley-Davidsons right up against the protesters, racked them up. And if you've never heard a Harley-Davidson being racked up, you can't hear anything else. That was the beginning of the Patriot Guard. We are now four hundred thousand strong across the United States. Now, there's a lot of statistics to go on along with that, a lot of things that we have done, a lot of things that we intend to do. And for that, I will turn it over to my wife.
Good morning.
Morning.
Um, I'd like to tell you a little bit about why we're here today. But first, I want to ask you three questions. Where were you? What were you doing? And how did you feel? We all remember 9/11. Where we were, what we were doing, and the emotions we all felt when we heard the news of the Twin Towers, the Pentagon, and Flight 93. This day was our modern-day Pearl Harbor. The day when America was once again provoked into war where nearly 3,000 innocent Americans were murdered on our own soil. Regular citizens, just like you and I, going about their day, making a living and taking care of their families. That day struck the beginning of the global war on terrorism. And this war continues today. More than 20 years later, this war, as in other wars, brings casualties on the battlefield as well as unspoken ones here at home. The Gold Star families, the Gold Star children, and those left behind by our fallen heroes. We must never forget. We turn on the news and hear about another soldier, sailor, airman, or marine killed in this war, but we do not hear about the families they leave behind, the surviving mothers, fathers, and especially the young children who do not understand why Mama or Daddy is not coming home. These Gold Star children have lost one, or in some cases, both, parents due to the global war on terror, making the ultimate sacrifice for our freedom to assemble here today. The Patriot Guard riders have proudly partnered with the Gary Sneeze Foundation and Snowball Express and American Airlines to show these amazing Gold Star children and families that their enormous sacrifice and the sacrifice of their fallen parent will never be forgotten by sponsoring an all-inclusive five-day stay at Disney World in Orlando. This experience will certainly provide a fun-filled vacation, but more importantly, it will create an environment of healing along with a lifelong network and support system for these very special children. The Patriot Guard riders in Florida have been honored to be a part of this. That being said, I'm going to give you just a few statistics of what we accomplished in the month of December at Disney World for Gold Star families. This year, in 2021, I'm sorry, in December of 2021, the Patriot Guard riders provided leather vests and custom patches for each child with sewing provided on-site. We have 24 sewing machines going non-stop the entire time we're there. 921 vests issued and patched. An estimated, our sewing team sewed approximately 4,500 patches on vest. We made dog tags for each child with their name on one side and the name of their fallen hero on the other. 800-plus pre-made dog tags issued. The children can also order custom dog tags made on-site. 253 custom dog tags made. Photos on real motorcycles with the background of their choice. 641 photos were processed. Comfort bears with custom-made vests. 652 comfort bears, teddy bears picked up. Thousands of military-related items such as cups, mugs, pens, pencils, lanyards, decals, stress balls, et cetera. We served 1,422 visitors in the Patriot Guard room in the Coronado Resort at Disneyland. That being said, um, it comes down to, we are the fundraising coordinators for this district, for the state of Florida. Comes down to money. We need help, we need donations, we need community support, and that's why we're here today. We got together, my husband and I, and produced a fundraising motorcycle ride in, on March 4th, 2022. And we had unwavering support from this community. We would like to recognize some of those people that gave the support that they did. I would like to call the following people up, please. Captain Randy Hayes. He's not here, is he? Lieutenant Jared Guy. Sergeant Hagan Butts.
Deputy Mac Westberry.
Deputy Kirsten Ferguson.
And Deputy Tanner Titt.
I would also like to call out, um, Mr. Larry Harvey. Please come forward.
This plaque is for the Putnam County Sheriff's Office, BGR Snowball Express Support. Colonel Wells was pivotal in making this event happen. We thank you for your unwavering support, Patriot Guard riders and Snowball Express organization as we serve Gold Star families who have lost their hero in defense of our country. Your support of Gold Star families is appreciated and beyond measure and heartfelt by all who serve. We are indebted to you for your support, Patriot Guard riders. Don't go anywhere yet.
We're not done.
Commissioner Hart, BGR Snowball Express Support. We thank you for your unwavering support, Patriot Guard riders, Snowball Express organization, and Gold Star families who have lost their hero. Your support of Gold Star families is appreciated and heartfelt and heartfelt by all who serve. Okay, uh, Colonel Wells, would you accept this for Captain Hayes?
Okay, Captain Hayes, Putnam County Sheriff's Office, Commander, Special Operations Bureau. On behalf of the Patriot Guard riders in Florida, I would like to seize this opportunity to formally express our thanks and gratitude for your assistance with our fundraising event that took place on the 4th of March, 2023. Your intervention with traffic control and organization of your officers as well as cross-agency communication was pivotal in the success of our event and provided a seamless transition. Without the assistance of you and your officers, the outcome could have been decidedly different as you provided the atmosphere where safety was the number-one concern for the riders as well as the general public using the roads that day. Additionally, the efforts of you and your officers helped us in adding over $2,000 towards assisting Gold Star children. The professionalism and unselfishness displayed by, to this cause by you is worthy of emulation by your superiors, peers, subordinates alike, and brings great credit to you and your organization. Once again, thank you for a mission completed with skill and expertise. It is my desire that the copy of this correspondence become a part of your permanent personnel file, and we wish you continued success within and all endeavors that you seek. Signed, Don and Gina Hartsfield, District Four Fundraising Coordinators.
Lieutenant Jared Guy, Putnam County Sheriff's Office, Deputy Commander, Central Law Enforcement District. On behalf of the Patriot Guard riders in Florida, I would like to seize this opportunity to formally express our thanks and gratitude for your assistance with our fundraising event that took place on the 4th of March, 2023. Your intervention with traffic control and organization of your officers was pivotal in the success of our event. Without the assistance of you and your officers, the outcome could have been decidedly different as you provided the atmosphere where safety was the number-one concern for the riders as well as the general public using the roads that day. Additionally, the efforts of you and your officers helped us raise over $2,000 towards the funding of the Gold Star children. Professionalism and unselfishness displayed by you is worthy of emulation by your peers and subordinates alike and brings great credit to you and your organization. Once again, thank you for a mission completed with skill and expertise. It is my desire that the copy of this correspondence become a permanent part of your personnel file, and we wish you continued success within and all endeavors that you seek.
Okay, we have some certificates of appreciation here I'd like to give out. I'm going to read the first one, and, um, then I'm going to give all of them out to you individually. Certificate of Appreciation, certificate of the Lord's Sergeant Hagan Butts, in recognition of his unpretending support of the Patriot Guard riders and Snowball Express organization, serving Gold Star families. Professionalism and dedication to the communities we serve are all due to Don, Tom, Tom, and me, our fundraiser partners. We do want, I mean, any night, 2023. And I want Sergeant Hagan Butts. Deputy Mac Westberry.
These officers were also involved in, uh, traffic control and just supporting the Patriot Guard through, uh, lack. And they did an outstanding job. There were a total of 17 riders that took place in this event, and this was the first one. There will be more.
And we, thank you, thank you, thank you.
I just want to say in closing, I don't have the words, but a man or a woman never stood so tall as one who stood so tall. Thank you for that.
All right, that was great. Okay, um, next, we're going to move on to public comment on agenda items. This portion of the agenda is designed to allow citizens
Than do uh do for this project that'll keep us out of uh difficulties on multiple fronts. And with that, I'm gonna call for a vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it, motion carries unanimously. Um Tom Thomas here today, is he gonna do code enforcement or? Alright, your turn. Come forward. We're gonna move into the code enforcement cases.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Will you?
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay, first code case is twenty twenty one thirty-three. Address is one fifteen Cherokee Drive, uh property owner's name is Caesar Jimenez Fontanis and Jimenez. Butley, um violation was unsafe structure and care premises. The original fine amount was three thousand eight hundred sixty-eight dollars and fifty cents. Total cost of enforcement action is one thousand eight hundred nine dollars. Property owners recently purchased the property, it's now compliant and requesting a fine reduction. If the board approves, we recommend the reduced fine to be paid within ninety days.
Is there anybody present today that would like to speak for or against this case? Cheryl entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept case number twenty twenty dash zero zero one three three. Eighteen hundred and nine dollars if paid within ninety days.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it, motion passes. Um. Case number seventeen two fifteen?
Yes. Address is three sixteen Palmway Drive, the property owner's name is Maria Moya and Carlos Alasko. The violation is unsafe mobile home and care premises. Original fine amount was forty thousand eight five hundred eighty dollars and eighty-three cents. Total total cost of enforcement action is two thousand twelve dollars. Property owners had recently purchased the property, it's now compliant and requesting a fine reduction. If the board approves, we recommend the reduced fine to be paid within ninety days.
Is there anybody in attendance today that would like to speak for or against this case? Cheryl entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, on case number two thousand seventeen dash zero zero two one five, accept staff recommendation of two thousand twelve dollars if paid within ninety days.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it, motion carries unanimously. Uh case number twenty fourteen two seventy-one?
Address is one oh two Cypress Street, property owner's name is Black Dog Investments LLC. Violation was care premises, original fine amount was twelve thousand four hundred twenty-five dollars. Total cost of enforcement action is two thousand four dollars. Property owners recently purchased the property, it is now compliant and requesting a fine reduction. If the board approves, we recommend the reduced fine to be paid within ninety days.
Thank you, is there anyone in attendance today that would like to speak for or against this case? Seeing none, uh Cheryl entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'm on a roll, two thousand fourteen dash zero zero two seventy-one. If staff recommendation of two thousand four dollars if paid within ninety days.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it, motion carries unanimously. Okay, uh case number uh twenty fourteen one one two?
Address is one oh two Cypress Street, property owner's name is Black Dog Investments LLC. The violation was demo permit required, original fine amount was seventy-nine thousand nine hundred eighteen dollars and fifty cents. Total cost of enforcement action was one thousand nine hundred seventy-four dollars. The property owner has recently purchased the property, it's now compliant and requesting a fine reduction. If the board approves, we recommend the reduced fine to be paid within ninety days.
Okay, thank you, is there anybody today that would like to speak for or against this case? Before we do this one, I'm not I'm not against it, but. There's something fundamentally wrong with what we're doing around here. If somebody doesn't pull a demo permit. And it ends up getting a fine of seventy-nine thousand nine hundred eighteen dollars and fifty cent. Applied to their property. Um, I'm gonna be for this this morning, Commissioner, I am, but there's something fundamentally wrong with that issue. That we're gonna charge somebody eighty thousand dollars because they didn't pull a fifty dollar permit, that ain't right. That ain't right. I know you weren't here, Thomas, I'm not doing that, I'm just saying that. This particular case is not right and shouldn't ever have been allowed to happen. So Cheryl entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I have a co- question.
Yes.
Thomas, this is on the same pro- thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, uh this is on the same property too. As the previous one.
Yes.
One oh two Cypress, so these per- these violations ran together uh because there was two separate ones, correct?
This was the first case, um.
This was the first case.
Mobile home was taken off the property without a permit, so they opened up a case and then. They they had already taken it to the magistrate hearing, so we already had an order and then there was a whole bunch of trash that showed up, so. They had to open up another case for care premises.
Well, usually in the past, we've kinda helped out on one, so Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion of two thousand fourteen. Dash zero zero one one two, the fine is zero and no pay in ninety days.
We have a motion, do we have a second? Uh I need a second.
I'll sec- I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, Commissioner Adams, act.
I'm all in favor of this, I I would like the motion to change a little just to say in lieu of the prior.
Okay.
Case number.
Mr. Chairman, I'll amend my motion to say in lieu of the prior case, this ca- in case number two thousand fourteen zero zero seven one. And case number two thousand fourteen zero zero one one two are on the same property. Case number two thousand fourteen zero zero one one two uh being a zero fine and no payment time is required.
Do we have a amend in the motion as the second?
I'll amend a second.
Okay, and uh with that being under uh under discussion, I'd just like to say this is not new precedence. We've done this multiple times in the past where they had two fines on the same property. We charged them fi- a fine on the first one and then eliminated the fine on the second one. Uh so this is not a new precedence, Commissioner Wilkinson.
Um, I'm I'm having a little difficulty with the recommendation of zero, I mean, I understand that you. Said that we've done this in the past, but this is. An investment group that came in and bought this property wi- with the assistance of a realtor and. They should have done some due diligence and so. I don't think adding nineteen hundred dollars is unreasonable when you're reducing a fine from seventy-nine thousand. So if I'm if I'm missing something here, I mean, we have to s- we have to treat to some degree. The the permitting like a business and I don't like the idea that we're gonna lose money. I don't like the idea that we're gonna put this burden of nineteen hundred dollars on the rest of the citizens of this county. So if I'm missing something because I'm the newest county commissioner here, please help me.
I don't know that you're missing anything, Commissioner, I believe that the difference in this Commissioner's book is. Is that we've done this multiple times in the past and this has never been to make money, it's been to get the place cleaned up. And in this particular case, what bothers me the most about it. Is that this county should have never charged eighty thousand dollars because you didn't pull a fifty dollar permit, that ain't right.
I understand that.
That ain't right, and I don't care who owns it, I don't care if the. It makes no difference to me who owns the property, that's just to me is not right.
And and I and I agree that we're not in this to make money, but we certainly aren't in it to lose money. We aren't in it that that one one person, you know, gets the advantage of this property. Nineteen hundred dollars from a from regardless of what the re- the 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 fine is, is a good number. I mean, I don't see that as an as an issue, so that's where I'm at.
I understand, and at one point, the um we actually didn't even charge administrative monthly fees. And we decided to start charging that because there is some some about validity to that. To that fee and so we went back to not reducing the by the but the eleven hundred and ten dollars of this is a. Is basically a ten dollar fee that that is assessed every month whether somebody looks at it or not. So it was a little bit arbitrary, we felt like, and but then there is some. There is some level of uh staff involvement every month, just keeping track of these and so that's why the. Ten dollars started getting put back on there, so. Um, I truly believe in holding people accountable, I really truly believe in that. What I don't believe in is weaponizing the government against somebody, I really don't believe in that. And I think that's what may have happened here. When uh when a fine of eighty thousand dollars has been able to accrue on a fifty dollar permit, something is wrong. Something is wrong, so I don't really care if we do this one for free.
Chairman, I I have a comment for you.
Okay, I really don't care if we do this one for free or not, I don't. Um, but I don't think we should charge that kinda money and I don't think this county should ever allow it to get to that point again in the future. On anything that's ever done around here, that not pulling a fifty dollar permit would get you an eighty thousand dollar fine on your property, that's just not right. Commissioner Adams, act.
To me, and the the reason why I support this really has nothing to do with the money or any of that part of the conversation. It's the value of removing blight and removing these type of structures as well as litter on a property. Is worth well more than nineteen hundred dollars to the surrounding neighborhood, the citizens and to this county. Um, it will, as we get more and more of these off the ro- off of the. The roles of being a fine thing and back into the real roles of being taxable assets and possible buildable assets. We are gonna see an improvement, I think that's tenfold, um so the nineteen hundred dollars is is has very little relevance to me. Um in this particular instance, and there many of them, there's many of them where we we do a fine right, I feel like. It's an overstep even what we do do, um that's me personally. Um, when these people go out of their way to to improve something, it doesn't just improve it for their little piece of property, it improves it for everyone in the neighborhood. It improves the the sight of the neighborhood, improves the the people's feelings when they drive by it, there's just a lot more that goes with it. And nineteen hundred dollars is a very small price to pay since since.
Thank you for those comments, I appreciate that.
I appreciate the discussion, we need to discuss this from time to time, especially to let the public don't know that we carry these cases lightly as we go. So uh we have a motion on the floor, if there's not any further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Thomas, shake your come and, yes, sir. Uh next, we're gonna go to appointments. Um. The uh I would like to, on the Better Place Plan Oversight Committee, I would like to appoint Ms. Brenda Fletcher. For the District Three Representative. Um, I don't think it's proper as chair to make a a uh. A uh recommendation as far as or a uh actual appointment or to for an at-large position. So I would like to uh recommend that if somebody would consider. Avette Jones as an at-large position on the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, that's been vacant for quite some time. And she has reached out to the commission and said she would be willing to do that.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that we get Avette Jones on the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee.
I second that.
Okay, thank you for the second, but on on uh. On this, we didn't need a second, but thank you very much for that, um all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it, motion carries unanimously. And that's all I have today, Commissioner Adams, act.
Uh Judy Costanza would like to serve on that on the District Four Representation.
Okay, that's a district appointment, so if there's a necessary, okay. Um, you have any more, sir?
I do not, sir, thank you.
Uh Commissioner Pickens?
Just wanna make a comment, um last meeting, I recommended uh nominated Ms. Brenda Fletcher to serve for District One. On the Affordable Housing, um excuse me, the Better Place Plan Oversight. For the first six six years of my commissionship, where she lived was in my district, but after we redid some redistricting. Uh she is in she is in District Three, so I lost that section, which is Buffalo Bluff, so. Uh but I I commend and uh Commissioner Turner for reaching out to her and uh she'll be a good uh member of that board, so and I have no other appointments.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Pickens, um Commissioner Wilkinson.
I don't have, I know, I I have none.
Okay. So we're going to move in the cup public comment on miscela- miscellaneous items. And Wayne's got this thing working so good, it's making funny noises this morning. Oh, that's what I'm saying. He got a working use, couldn't hear that kinda stuff. Okay, um. Public comment on miscellaneous items, this portion of the agenda is designed to allow citizens an opportunity to bring matters to the attention of the board. It is not reasonable to expect that the board will engage in po- in debate or deliberation about matters. On which the board has had no prior information as part of the agenda, please limit your comments to three minutes. Public comment cards are conveniently placed at the meeting room entrance and uh. It should be submitted prior uh to the deputy clerk. Who sits to the right of the podium. Okay, um then I have a couple this morning. First, I have Jeannie Shockley. If you would give us your name and address for the record, please.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Jeannie Shockley. And in the wintertime, I am, I have the pleasure of living down here at one twenty-four Clark Lane. Um Pomona Park, that's on the west side of Lake Como. And the win- and in the summertime, as a snowbird, I live in Kokomo, Indiana, which is just north of Indianapolis. My and I apologize, my husband sends these apologies that he's not here to be with me, but he just had heart surgery last week, so. Bear with me, please. We purchased our property in nineteen eighty-eight. And began building the following year, very close to where my grandparents settled in nineteen fifty-six. So our family's been coming to this area for approximately sixty-seven years. During that time, we have maintained the same road now known as Clark Lane. Paying for all improvements that were required by the four property owners on Clark Lane down close to the lake. Then in May twenty twenty, Mr. Ramon Venegas of seven two four Lake Como Drive Pomona Park. Decided to take all of his brush from trimming trees. And dragged it into the middle of Clark Lane and tied it down with ropes so it could not be driven around. He does not want any traffic driving by his house. Which was built after we were there. He is the fourth owner of that house and has lived there for eight years before he attempted to do this. We were here before that house was even built. Coming to visit, I remember when it was in Orange Grove. We have never had any trouble with any of our previous neighbors, got along wonderfully with them. But one particular one did attempt at one time to try to close off the road. When he had the ownership of the house for a short period of time. But after receiving a letter from our lawyer, he dropped the issue immediately. I have included. Excuse me, I'm. Lost my place there. I've included for all of you to read a copy of the deed that was written in nineteen fifty-four. That issued that road to the Putnam County trustees. So it is been determined after a three-year legal battle now. That yes, the county of Putnam does own that road. And that it should be available for all people to use. However, we are not, we still do not have use of that road. We were issued a permit in April of nineteen twenty-two to do improvements, to get it back into shape again. And that we s- I've not been able to use it, it has ran out. We've it had been issued a new one for extension of six months. However, I'm gonna be going home, I'm not gonna be able to do anything in the six months. So when we tried to access Lake Como Drive from this track, the. We've been forced to use a a track of ten feet wide. And when we use that, there's been no less than eleven times. That I or my husband or some of our neighbors have almost been hit. Coming out of that sandy track because of the angle that we have to come out. Because we're at the bottom of a curve, so I've included a picture of the drawing showing that curve on Lake Como Drive. And you will see the straightaway where we are coming out and at an angle. And we are at a blind spot and people come flying around that curve, it's very dangerous. It has taken an extremely long time for officials to realize that Clark Lane is actually a county road for all of us to use and cannot be closed off. In April of twenty-two, I finally received that permit, as I previously mentioned. We even had that area resurveyed at our own personal expense. In preparation for a company to come and do the work and our stakes were immediately removed within hours and thrown in the trees and the bushes.
Miss Shockley, are you about to wind it up?
Yes. When we returned, Mr. Venegas still had his vehicles in the road and even convinced the county in the past somehow to move our Clark Lane sign from its appropriate location. We have tried on several occasions to speak with him personally with no success. And with legal correspondence, no success. But if we even tried to trim the weeds or when we burned the brush pile to avoid snakes to collect. All Mr. Venegas did was call the police and I recognized several of the deputies faces today that was in here that's had to come out at different times. Um over the situation and it's not fair, they shouldn't be having to come out for a simple reason, the dispute between neighbors. As I finished in January twenty twenty-three, we were ready to um do the road repair again. And it still was not ready. Our neighbors are willing to take over this supervision of the road repair even though it is issued in my name. However, we understand Colonel Wells, who I recognize, and came out in January and spoke with me at length. Uh that's nothing has been accomplished, we feel the situation's gone on far too long. Even with the consideration of some staff changes in the county, we and during COVID. What we do not understand is why after two visits from the sheriff's department, cannot just put stickers on their vehicles. And give them a warning like abandoned vehicles along the road and then after certain amount of time, they have got to move them. And I've included, I'm sure you would just be as frustrated as I am if this was your neighbor or your property that was doing this to you. And so I have included nine photos, I'm gonna mention them very quickly, the first one is the brush pile that I mentioned.
Shockley, Miss Shockley. Uh you're running way over on time, I appreciate you uh coming to us today, could I ask a couple of questions?
Yes, sir, please.
Um, have you approached the county or anybody other than the sheriff's department about this issue to date? In other words, has anybody determined is it private ground, does the county own it at all? Because we can't do anything on private ground, we can't do anything, the county doesn't fight over your property lines. If you decide where a line is or if you think you should on a road and there might be an easement or not or whatever, the county doesn't fight over that that I'm aware of. And so that, I I don't know what you're asking us to do, I guess is what I, have you approached anybody at the county?
Yes, I've I've had an attorney contact, the county attorney, who's made a determination that it is county road. And he has spoke with the um county administrator. Who had said that it needed to be taken care of, Mr. Subs. And Mr. Grimes, who is newer in the office, came in in the middle of this. And he has been brought up to speed and talked to our attorney and they're all nodding, they recognize the problem. And all I'm asking is, can we please settle this? I'm easy to get along with, but.
Thought you got me at a loss, Miss Shockley, because I haven't heard about this before and so as my. As my uh comments that I made before, public comment were um. The commission is not gonna debate or move this issue forward today until we know a little more about it. Um, whose district are you in?
Mr. Pickens.
Miss Shockley, she contacted me the three years ago and after the research, from what I remember. I told you that that was not a county road. And I suggested that you seek um legal counsel, which she did. And that legal counsel has been uh speaking to the county back as far as uh Mike Troxel. I believe, and from what I understand, they ha- have it worked out, um JR, is that correct? That it is a c- it is a dedicated to the the county, the county does not maintain this road.
There is, county does own a portion of that land.
Right.
The people on that road do have legal access, needed access to their property. The county has said that we have no need to build a road in front of these people's home, they have legal needed access. We run into this quite frequently all over the county, I've worked with their legal counsel. I believe uh the Shockleys have agreed to build a road. We've reached out to the sheriff's office and asked them if we could potentially get some assistance moving the vehicles off of the county right of way. And that's truly what it is, it's county right of way, there's not a road established there today, um they're gonna have to build a road. Uh that the Shockleys have agreed that they'll build a road according to their legal counsel. Uh Colonel Wells has made a couple attempts to go in there and speak with the homeowners with, I've I've spoken to him this morning with no success of speaking to the people. Um, our job as public works to ensure that people have legal needed access to the road and and to their residents, and at this point, they do. Um so I've looked with their legal counsel for them to decide how they wanna proceed forward, I believe they still wanna build a road. Um in front of these people's home and uh we're gonna have some more discussion on how we want to move forward as a county. On whether we want to put a road right in front of this miss- this uh gentleman's home um within feet of his front door.
It's not a road at the current time?
No, sir, it's not.
Okay. So why would the county, again, why would the county be involved in trying to build this road if it's not a road at the current time? And it's not a maintained road and it's a right of way that since sometime in the past was dedicated to the county. But the county mayor may not have accepted the right of way, which doesn't make it any different than a thousand other ones that actually somebody gave to the county. The county never accepted them and we've deemed them at least twenty times in the last few years, I know of, we've deemed them to not be county right of way or county roads. It might be county land, but not necessarily a county road.
That's correct.
So.
May I make a comment, it's my understanding that we were given access to use that road by the county. As long as we kept up the maintenance on the road, which we did, and I have thirty years of receipts at my home showing where we have. Kept up maintenance on that road and one of the photos will show where it was in better condition in the beginning where the brush pile's sitting on it. And the last picture, unfortunately, two of you are short, the third, the very last picture where it's gone to waste. And we can't, we aren't even allowed to get up there and keep it trimmed and taking care of it at this point, um. We've got a company that has been ready for two years to come in and do the re- the uh move the road over a little bit and keep it. In repair for us. But we cannot get Mr. Venegas to move his vehicles. That's all we're asking is that he move the vehicles that are sitting in the way so that we can make it. Accessible for us to come in and be able to come in and out to our homes at a safer point. Off in and off of Lake Como Drive than what we're using now. It's and it, the road we're using now, if I would have had to call an ambulance for my husband, I don't know if the ambulance could have got in there on a ten-foot right of way in that sugar seal.
I understand, Miss Shockley, but with me not having the particulars about this situation, I can't. Intently speak to you about it because I don't even know at this point if we even own the property or don't own the property or whatever, I have one lawyer saying maybe, another one saying, well, could be. I I've got to have some uh so but I what I will do is I will ask.
Well, Mr. Commission, just.
Well, Mr. Commission, just so you know, I mean, I understand the representation that was just made. But I mean, the county was advised at one point that there was a clearing of twelve feet onto uh Mr. Venegas's property. And it wasn't within what the county owned. And that was a lot of the problem as well. And I think the property owners were told that this was a civil matter um that they had to work at amongst themselves.
Okay. We'd research that a little bit and get back to Mr. Suggs. And Mr. Suggs, would you talk to Ms. Shockley? Because unless, if that's the way it is, you're asking us to do something we can't do. We can't work on private property. And we're not going to go fight over your disputed property lines on one side or the other. We just don't do that. The county doesn't.
I understand that. And I appreciate that very much. And I've waited three years before I even came and approached all of you. It's just that I keep getting he said, she said, they said, and I'm not getting clear answers. And we need to settle this.
Your attorney doesn't?
So we can all get along.
Your attorney doesn't have clear answers for you?
He keeps trying to get clear answers. Um in fact, Mr. Pickens the third is my attorney. And he has been in communication with Mr. Suggs and Mr. Grimes and with Mr. Comato. And he thought everything was settled. He was surprised when I came down in January and found out that we didn't have the road back. So.
Well, could you uh?
I'm just bringing it to everyone's attention to see if someone can have an understanding ear and try to help me get this settled somehow in the right direction.
Only if it's something that the county has the ability to do. We're not going to get involved in your property dispute.
Correct. No, I'm not asking you to be judge and jury. I would never ask that.
Okay. Rich, would you look into it a little more? And would you uh, Terry, would you uh find out what his opinion is on it or what have you? And at that point, is Mr. Pickens the third still your attorney?
Yes, sir.
Would you reach out to Mr. Pickens the third and ask and explain to him what y'all's uh, what you think is uh, is our point, our part of this?
Absolutely will. And just on the record, I've had a conversation with Mr. Pickens the third as recent as a week ago. So we are, we are aware of this and we are going through the process and will certainly continue to communicate.
Well, that's fine. Like I said, if you, if Rich would look into it and you could get back with uh, uh, uh the, Mr. Pickens the third. Where I'm saying the third, because I don't want anybody to think it's not the junior. So anyhow, okay. Is that okay with other commissioners?
Yes, I believe that what you're saying from a week ago was when you issued that permit, they extended it for six months.
That is correct. I, I approved and authorized an extension of the request for the right of way permit.
Oh, we cannot get the equipment in to do it.
Yes, ma'am, I understand. But that was the request.
That's what we need to clarify.
Yes, ma'am, that was the request that came from your attorney. And that was uh, that was uh handled promptly by myself.
Ms. Shockley, would you reach out to Mr. Suggs after the meeting if you still have?
I certainly will. Thank you for taking time to listen to me and.
Yeah, just want to make sure that I actually thought this thing had been taken care of and moving forward. Um and if, if his vehicles need to be moved, we get code enforcement involved in that to, to, to start cases on that and move it forward. Because it sounds like they've kind of come to an agreement. Um but they, but they cannot fix the road because of, of vehicles and things like that in the way. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, that's all we're saying.
We'll take.
If it's our right of way and they've got vehicles parked on our right of way, it's not a code enforcement thing anymore. It's a sheriff's department thing. If it's proven that it's on the right of way and it is our right of way and the county deems that it's our right of way, then that's a different ballgame. And you know, if, if, if everything here looks, looks like to me, if, if it is a clear cut deal where it's our right of way and somebody's blocking our right of way, it's no different than we've done with many other people. They went and pulled a right of way permit. They're allowed to go work on the right of way if we give them permission by pulling a right of way permit. If all that's taking place and the guy's going in there and blocking our right of way, that's a sheriff's department thing, I would think. So if that turns out to be the case. Joe, you're going to have to come up with a microphone. You know that.
Some truth to it. The issue that we have is, and it's, I know it's hard for you to picture. If you turn where this party claims the right of way is, it's the gentleman's driveway. So we're towing his cars out of his driveway, part of it. The other issue that we run into is it's not marked. This right of way is like through brush and trees. So I don't know where these lines are. And I understand that maybe it's been served and they've been pulled. And we could do like that, you know, uh Mr. Sharp to give us some guidance here. But it's maybe a county right of way, but it's not an established roadway. There's no road markings, the road sign's not there. And the road sign's actually further up the road, which is how I accessed their house. So I mean, we, we could certainly look into it once, but we would at least still have to have the survey markers there. Because when you, and it looked, and this is why I went personally, because the deputies were so, having so much challenge with this. Because if you turn where the claim is the right of way, you drive up his driveway and then very, very close to his front door. It looks like you're driving through his yard. So that's the challenge that we've been having is where is this? And is this truly an operable roadway, right of way type thing? But we'll be happy to help out when we can.
No wonder this has turned into a three-year-long sticky situation.
It is very difficult.
I'm assuming y'all continue to look at this. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Shockley, for coming to this.
I realize I went way over with this, but thank you for taking time and lending your ears.
Thank you.
Um. We're going to move down the agenda of the Honorable Matt Reynolds. Oh, I did, I'm sorry. If you'll give me another second, Matt. This Nicole Grace. Going to tell us about cleaning something up.
I do appreciate moving it along. My stomach's starting to growl, but um, sorry, Matt. Uh my name is Nicole Grace. I'm executive director of Keep Putnam Beautiful, two oh five North Second Street, Placca, Florida, three two one seven seven. I wanted to give a couple of thank yous to our um Putnam Republican Club. They had not just one cleanup, but three cleanups throughout our county this past weekend. And uh it was out on the river from Crystal Cove. That's, that's not, okay, thank you. Um.
Operator error on our end.
Uh also Interlochen and Crescent City uh behind the junior senior high school, which they annually do and just added Interlochen and Crystal River. So, I mean, Crystal Cove, sorry. So we could be on the Saint John's River. And I actually got to see the mug race, which was pretty awesome from the cleanup in the morning before I headed out uh to see um, to see Interlochen. Also, on the twenty-ninth of April, uh Pomona Park Beautification Committee uh held, held a cleanup. They're going to be going to um four times a year, which we're really excited about. And we were able to pull some tires from that cleanup as well as go around. And we had uh between uh Jim, Daniel and I, we had forty tires that we took in for that tire amnesty day. Um we're not getting a ton of tires. I know they were surprised at sanitation for our tire amnesty days. People aren't coming out, but we still know they're on the roads. So our last one is going to be on May twentieth. That's coming up in uh two weeks, very quickly. Uh we'll be out on the roads again. It's from nine to three, so I'll be picking up tires. I know that um Mr. Buddy Goddard and um Pomona Park Beautification Committee are offering to trailer in tires. So if you uh had a location, in fact, they went out on Facebook and said, hey, you know, if you know where they are, tell me, show me on a map and I'll come get them. Uh but to try to get the tires is, is our last one. It's a mosquito habitat as well as being um honestly an eyesore. And but it's coming up quick. May twentieth, nine to three, main landfill. And they actually will have, um so the inmates will load or, I'm sorry, not load, unload the tires from your vehicle so you don't have to unload them out there. Um and they have it set up pretty well.
Thank you, Nicole.
Any questions?
Is there a possibility that we could, on Tire Amnesty Day, that if one of these, whoever they are, groups or individuals pick up more than twenty tires, that we can, for those groups, we can waive the twenty tire limit if they're out picking them off sides of our roads? And picking them up off public right of way? Well, is one of these individuals that are going around picking up tires offside of the road, are they going to have to like go collect people to take with them to the dump? Or are they going to have to pay to dump the tires that they're picking up off our right of ways?
The main one, I believe, is the last one of this year. So we've got some time to revise our program and make some further enhancements.
When Mr., when Mr. Tilton gets back, we'll sit down with Mr. Tilton and uh have some conversations that we can do.
Okay, I think we should. I think we should seriously consider if they're actually picking up group photos, the Putnam Beautification or whatever it is, if they're out picking up tires off our right of ways for Tire Amnesty Day, we probably shouldn't charge them for bringing the tires to the landfill that we would probably go pick up if somebody called in and told us about them. So anyhow, yes, Commissioner Wilkinson.
Uh Nicole, thank you for what you do in the community and all the volunteers that are out there helping pick up trash. Um I had mentioned before about Marion County and what they've done for their um trash, what the county uh commission's done. I've sent that information to our administrators and uh Jay Tilton to look at. And I'll make sure you get copied on it. If you guys could make sure that the rest of the commissioners get that as well. It did, I don't think it got forwarded to them. But um I just want to make sure that we take a look at it. And um I'd love to get your opinion on, you know, what you think Marion County has done, whether it's good and what, you know, just get your general, general uh thoughts on that and what they're doing in Marion County, how it would apply to Putnam County. And it's, it's a process. It's not something that we're going to be able to put into place, you know, in one board meeting. There was a, they had a committee um that made some recommendations to the board and a task force. And so I think that following somewhat of what they've done, it could make our, our county a little bit cleaner and more successful. So.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yep, thank you.
Nicole, thank you very much and sorry for passing over you a minute ago.
That's all right.
Um I believe that's all the comment cards. Is there anybody else today in the audience that would like to speak? Okay, seen none. Um I'm going to go down the agenda now to the Honorable Matt Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um Commissioners. Uh I will only bring up one thing. Um just wanted to mention the updated um draft investment policy I sent out last Friday. I'll be putting that on um next agenda. So if any Commissioners have any input or would like to discuss, feel free to uh reach out. And that's the only thing I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Uh county attorney, uh county administrator.
Nothing today, sir, thank you.
Are you sick? Don't encourage. Sorry, couldn't help it. Um county Commissioners' comments, Commissioner Adams' act.
Um I guess the first thing I'm going to say is with regards to Marion County, I don't know what the policy is because I haven't seen it. But I don't see any difference. I live within miles of Marion County. I drive through Marion County regularly. I don't see some stark difference between the roads in Marion County and the roads in Putnam County. So whatever they're doing isn't working. Um Ocala is a disaster, the same as parts of Placca are, stuff all over the roads. Um Citra area and that is the same unless you're on a state road. So I don't see where it's making any difference. And I don't know how long they've implemented this, but I don't see any difference to Marion County's roads and our roads, at least not in areas that I drive through, which is basically from Citrus to Ocala and back is, would be the route I normally use. Um so maybe it is in some other areas, you know, where all the horse farms are or something, but then people maintain their property in there. Um so hopefully it's not too costly of a program because I don't see where it does anything. Um but that's neither here nor there. Now, if there's ideas in it that we can use and implement, I'm all for that. But um I don't see where there's any difference in Marion County from the six years that I've lived on the border of it. Um kind of want to recognize that it's National Corrections Month or Week, Week, today, this week. Um little story, my, my, and the reason why this is important to me is, I actually was a brig chaser in the Navy for about eight months, which was basically people that would get arrested or stuff on the base in Orlando. We would have to take them to the brig in Jacksonville. So we, we can't transport them back and forth. I drove the van, so I didn't have to do a lot of the interacting part. I just drove the van. But um my sister was a corrections officer in the state of New York for several years. Um her career was ended basically because she was attacked in the prison by an inmate. And there was actually other inmates that, that saved her life. Um so it's a very close thing to me and it's something I really never recognized until last year um around the same time when it came up because something happened to someone in my family. And that's the wrong way to go about it. We should always recognize these type of things. Um it's been said that, you know, recently that, you know, our corrections staff are just as important as our sheriffs on the roads. And I, and I believe that um because you have to keep the people that are the worst of the worst are the people who usually stay in prisons or in jails for the most part. Obviously, there's some people in the jail that are temporarily housed. Um but I just want to make sure we recognize that. Um kind of, I was talking about the, I was thinking about the county beautification, the waterways. So I, I have seen an improvement here in our county with the work that's been being done here. There's some, I think our biggest issue is outside of something. It's throwing out the windows on the sides of the roads. There's very pocket oriented areas in West Putnam. I know there's some in Placca. And there's some towards Pomona Park that I, that I know exists. Um obviously, there's some littering all over the county. I think part of what we're doing with these um code abatement cases is taking care of some of this stuff where a particular property is an issue and then it has overflow in neighboring properties. And there's instances where people are filling their property with garbage and it's ending up in their neighbor's property, not even containing their fences. Um so that is getting better. I know there's some people, individuals who are struggling with that right now. Um but I, I have seen an improvement in time living in this county, not just being a Commissioner. Um so I really appreciate your work, Nicole. Um I didn't know you were going to be here, but that was on my notes here. Um another thing I want to talk about, and we, we haven't talked about trails in a while. Um I think it's very important for us. And, and I've always felt that the focus should be on the River to Sea Loop as our priority in trails. And it seems like we've gotten away from that a little bit. Um I'd love to see us move this forward where we, we actually start to try to push the state. The state has given more appropriations to trails than this last cycle. And I'd like to see us push for that particular River to Sea Loop to be completed in our county. Um the other counties are starting to finalize their, their plannings. Obviously, it takes a lot to get it through the state process and things like that to get it built. But I, I would like us to start to open up that conversation specific to River to Sea Loop. Um again, that, that creates basically one of the biggest trail systems in the state of Florida. And once completed, one of the biggest trail systems in the, in the country. Um why that's important is because trail systems, when completed, if it's a full loop, become their own economy in a way, um drawing people from other areas to come to travel on the, on the loops. And also to uh, you know, events get held on loops. There's, there's, there's running races, there's cross-country stuff, there's bike races. And obviously, just the general ability of our citizens to enjoy the trail. Um it's very difficult. I know we've expanded it a little bit, but when people get to it, that, on a trail, where do you go? You either turn around or you get on the main way. And that creates safety issues. I think that's where I'm going to go today and I'm going to stop there. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Adams' act, Mr. Harvey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do want to also recognize Nicole Keep Putnam Beautiful, who has the most organized trailer that I've ever seen of any person. That's kind of a joke, but she pulled out there and this trailer is so organized. I'm thinking I'm going to hire her to organize some of my trailers. So, but um great cleanup. I've, I've cleaned up, I think ever since I've been in Interlochen, over forty years now. And um I just want to say what kind of amazes me in my role now as a Commissioner is I get calls about people who want me to go clean up their area. And I have cleaned up probably in my forty years more in other people's areas than I have in my own, my own neighborhood. I don't begrudge that a bit, but let's partner together. If you really want to clean up and you call me and I tell you when we're going to do it and you don't show up, I'd be willing to walk your road with you, but I'm just not going to walk your road. So um I just want to say that I'm willing to do whatever we can to make Putnam beautiful. Uh but we need help and we need, we need participation. And you know, when you see your neighbors cleaning up, the chances of you littering are going to go down. So that's why it's so important to get community, your community involved in that process. So I just wanted to thank you, Nicole, for, for always willing to get up early. I know I was kind of tired before we ever started, but um, you know, it was a great day and, and I appreciate it. I want to make another mention to our staff. I think we got one of the best staffs that I've ever been around. And at least in, in my position as a Commissioner, I feel like we have the best staff ever. Um JR, you were willing to meet with me last Friday out in Melrose. Um now you had an alternative motive to go get gizzards from another restaurant out there, but that's okay. But you sat down and we met with some DOT officials about some things in the roads in Putnam County and um. in Putnam County, and, um, other Commissioners are working on projects, and that's wonderful. Um, but you, you did that. Julianne, you had a meeting with me this week that I had to cancel, I apologize, but, um, when the dentist can fit you in, they fit you in in today's world, so... But we were gonna sit down and start talking budget and next year's budget. So, and Mr. Suggs, for, for what you've been through, you and your family in the recent weeks, you know, that's been very trying, but you still were there to reach out to me in your time of trouble, when it really was about you and your family. And I greatly appreciate that. Um, but I tell you, we've, I think we've got, again, I know we have the best staff I've ever seen in county government, and I would put our staff and our future staff that you're hiring up against anybody in this state, because I see the results that we get, and it wasn't that way, it wasn't that way nine years ago. So, I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's the end of my comments.
Okay, Commissioner, Commissioner Pickens?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman Turner. Um, I've got us wanna commend staff, uh, the Commission and the, uh, Putnam County Pickleball Association. Uh, the pickleball courts are finished. There's four very nice courts with fencing and lighting out at Triangle Park, and we had the ribbon cutting on Tuesday the second, and Administrator Suggs and Deputy County Administrator Julianne and, uh, Grimes came. Uh, Commissioner Harvey Turner and Wilkinson were also able to join me there with probably a hundred pickleball players, and they had refreshments. Um, we made some recommend, recognitions. Uh, Ms. Jimmy Simons represents the Pickleball Association, and she gave out some awards to their major sponsors that helped with this project. The, the county kicked in a hundred thousand dollars, and the rest of the money, a hundred and thirty thousand, I think, is what we kicked in, but there was other monies donated. But it's a very nice facility, and it's getting well-used, so I just wanna commend staff, uh, Commissioners for supporting that, uh, Kevin Stevens and his staff, um, for all their efforts, because it was a, a long project, uh, to get completed, uh, but it's done, and it's gonna be a nice eventy out there. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Pickens. Commissioner Wilkinson?
Thank you. Um, I'd like to recognize Mr. White from Saint John's River Water Management for being here today. Thank you for attending and, um, seeing what we're doing here in Putnam County. That's exciting. Um, secondly, I wanna recognize, um, two things that are on the consent agenda that I'm quite proud of, which is receiving the Hope Grant. Um, you know, that's gonna bring some unique transportation solutions to our county, and I am so appreciative that we are, uh, looking for all kind of grant opportunities. Also, the Firehouse Subs, um, donating a twenty thousand dollar grant for, um, you know, for equipment that we need in this, in this, um, county. And so, I just wanna recognize the hard work that our staff's putting in to try to get grants and, and bring in additional funds to our county. And then, um, let's see. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner. Um, I'd like to talk just a minute about the Georgetown Boat Ramp. Have we made any progress on that at all, or are we still? We've been working on this for five years. I wanna know, we can or we can't do it. Um, or, I mean, after five years, we ought to at least have the answer that we can, if we can, or I can't ask Commissioner Pickens this question unless we're on TV. So, I...
We discussed the boat ramp. We had it back from, um, University of Florida. We approved those, we moved forward, and we had a meeting with Water Management, and they were very pleased with how the utilization of the trails, the parking, and where the boat ramp was, was gonna impact wetlands as little as possible, okay? So, Julianne, I'll let you take it from here, because she's reaching out to, um, one of continuing contracts to get some engineering done, to see what this project's gonna cost.
So, there is still a possibility that sometime before I die, we might have a boat ramp at Georgetown, maybe? Long as you die.
Depends on how ugly you are today.
Yeah, depends on, depends on when you die and when they get the engineering done, so... But Julianne, you wanna update? Because I know there was an email that I was copied on, uh, from one of the engineers.
Yes, sir. The board just recently, um, approved staff to move forward with professional design, um, proposals. We did reach out to one and did not, uh, reach a mutually beneficial contract, so we moved to a second, who is proposed or agreed that he should have something by the end of the next ten days, give or take a week. Um, so, we're hopeful when that comes in, we'll bring it back to the board and ask you guys to allow us to move forward with those designs.
Yeah, is, is it still a possibility, and we might actually be getting them?
Absolutely.
Okay, I mean, no kidding. Um, so, the next one I'm gonna ask about, and I can't ask about this one either, really, is, uh, it's pretty profitable for DOT.
Right. So, uh, we had, um, a good meeting, um, last week, and there's, we're waiting on an appraisal. FDOT has gotten an appraisal done, and should, it's coming in at any point, and once that's completed, then we will have a couple of options as the county... And that's where they're at, um, but it's definitely moving forward, and...
Great.
They have some good, good, good information for us.
Well, good. I'm hoping that we can work out a lease deal or something with them, is what I'm hoping, uh, where we can lease the property and, or whatever. But that's good. Thank you for, uh, talking to DOT, and like I said, I can't call and ask you about that unless we're in a meeting. It would definitely be a violation of the sunshine law. Um, I know that we approved money for the East Palacca Community Park. Do we have a timeframe on when we're gonna make those provi, those provisions that we approved money for in the Beeden Ballpark?
Um, we have, we are waiting on, um, let me get an ETA from the contractor. We already have everything in line, we're just, I just don't know when installation is...
Sometime in not too lengthy future. We think we're gonna be starting on that one.
Yes, sir.
That's a good enough answer.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. Um, and then, uh, I understand that, uh, that the park in San Mateo got discussed yesterday. And by the way, I do wanna give kudos to Kevin and his crew. Kevin's not here this morning, but I wanna give kudos to Kevin and his crew for going out there and doing the work that was done on San Mateo. They made some, some, uh, repairs and changes to where at least it's not a dangerous place at the moment. Uh, he sent me an email this morning, uh, giving me an u-, update on that, that the swings have been fixed, and that the fencing and around the tennis courts have been repaired, and a couple of picnic tables have been removed, and the, and the concrete pads cleaned up, and, and they have a PO with a vendor to do something with the restrooms, either remove them or replace them or do something. I'm not sure at this point, but, um, if they, um, if they were gonna remove some restrooms, I'd like to have a ballpark idea on what it'd cost to replace them with some decent restrooms, and let the commission see if they can find the money to put in a set of restrooms for that park, and not just rely on a possible future FERDAP grant that we may or may not ever get. So, I'd like to, uh, see that take place, and I'd like to bring it forward to the commission and see if we can come up with the money to, to, uh, have a decent park in the, in District, District Three.